I am Blanny Miller, Chair of the Commission. Before we begin, I'd like to note that today's meeting will be ending early with a hard stop at 11:15, as described in Old Business Item D1. This is to accommodate the City Council meeting in these chambers beginning at 11:30. So, given the short meeting today, I would ask everyone to please be efficient with your comments and avoid redundancy so that we can hear from as many viewpoints on as many cases as possible. On to public comment. We start every meeting with an opportunity for the public to comment on an item not contained on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item not contained on the agenda today? Seeing none, moving on to the consent agenda. There are two items listed today, CP 722 and Z 922, which are the New Bern Station Area Planning Study, Comprehensive Plan Amendments, and 744 related rezoning cases. Council approved our request for an extension of time, so the deadline for action on both cases is now the Commission's first regular meeting in December, which is December 12. The recommended action on these items is to defer our hearing until a special meeting of the Committee of the Whole on Monday, November 6, at 4 o'clock in these chambers. By show of hands, who here is available to attend that meeting? The November 6th? Oh, I think all of us, perhaps? Yes, excellent. That's great news. That's okay. It looks like we still have six here, so we can... We should have a quorum even just by this table, and we may have others as well. So, with that, is there any debate or discussion on the consent agenda? Then seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bennett has seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Moving on to old business, there are four items on the agenda today. For these items, the committee has already received a full staff presentation, applicant presentation, and heard from the public. Our focus today will be on any updates or changes to the case since our last meeting. The first item, as discussed, Item D1, is the meeting schedule update, which indicates that this meeting will end early with a hard stop at 11:15 today. Moving on to D2, Z 8421 at Millbrook Road. We first heard this case at our September 12 meeting, where we received a staff presentation and heard from the public. This case was deferred to allow the applicant time to submit revised conditions. I will turn to Sarah Shaughnessy for a brief staff presentation focusing on updates since our last meeting.
Hi, good morning, Commission. So, instead of adding conditions, the applicant has actually modified the request down to R10. Previously, they had requested residential mixed-use three stories. So, you last heard this case September 12. Again, the request is to change from R6 to R10. No conditions are proposed, and this is the last Planning Commission meeting before your deadline on November 11. Just a quick refresher of where the site is located. The change here, the newly proposed R10 would modify the total proposed entitlement to 168. I think it was around 300 with the previous RX3, so a significant decrease in the proposed entitlement there. And then the other change is because the proposed district is a residential district, the previous analysis noting an inconsistency with the form, urban form map is no longer relevant. So again, consistent with a comprehensive plan, consistent with a future land use map, a number of consistent policies, no inconsistent policies, and then again, your deadline for action is November 11. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicant is here to answer questions as well.
Thank you very much. We have already received public comment on this case, but just so I can get a sense by show of hands, is there anyone here today in the public who wishes to speak on any of the proposed changes or any other aspect of this case that was not discussed previously? Then seeing none, I will bring it back to the table for questions and comments. Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
If you'll give me a second to look it up. Somebody gets there first, yeah.
Yeah. Chair Miller, for zoning case, was the 8421, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated October 24, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of a zoning amendment.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Alwell has seconded. Any further discussion or debates on the merits of the motion? Seeing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously, seven to zero. Moving on to Item D3, rezoning case Z 2623 at Glenwood Avenue. We first heard this case at our October 10 meeting, where we received a staff presentation and heard from the public. This case was deferred to allow the applicant time to submit revised conditions. I will turn to Matthew Burns for a brief staff presentation focusing on updates since our last meeting.
Good morning, planning commission members. Res zoning request Z 2623 first appeared at the October 10 meeting, and the case has not changed since its first appearance. The applicant submitted revised zoning conditions after the deadline for submission. Therefore, any changes are not reflected in the staff report. The revisions added a fourth condition, which says not less than 80% of the Glenwood Avenue frontage shall be occupied by a building facade located not more than 15 feet from the right-of-way boundary. The conditions that you've already seen at the last meeting are here. They propose prohibiting certain uses, dedicating an eight-doc bike-share easement, and one public art installation to be located on-site. The proposal is consistent overall with the comprehensive plan. It's inconsistent with part of the future land use map guidance of office and residential mixed-use, and is consistent with the urban form map. The deadline for action is November 25, and the next PC meeting before that deadline is November 14.
Thank you very much. So I can get a sense, are there any members of the public here who wish to speak on this case? Then seeing none, I would like to bring it back to the table and to kick off, see if the applicant could come and discuss the status of the added condition.
Thank you. Good morning, Molly Stewart, Morningstar Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant. Couple of updates for you today with respect to the condition that was submitted after the deadline for this meeting. There's been some discussion about that one with the decision to withdraw that, but I did want to address the height request that we heard at the last meeting, and that was where, that was the reason that we kind of went back on this one, to think about that request and what was possible with respect to height and with respect to protecting the area just outside of the downtown boundary. So I'll go through this fairly quickly. You see on your screen, it's a little hard to read, but this is where the comprehensive plan defines the boundaries of downtown, and I just wanted to highlight that those downtown transition areas are part of downtown, so they are not what's being buffered, they are the attempt to make sure that downtown is buffering itself to everything that's outside of it. So those transitions become important, and if you zoom in on the block where the site is located, you can see that a portion of it is located within that transition zone. So that transition zone is fairly narrow, only about a block and a half, and about a third of it is located on this block. So I want to be careful with this slide because these numbers represent different things, so we'll go through them one at a time, and I want to start over on the right-hand side where we have that 40, which is the current zoning height limit for the site just across the street on the east side of Glenwood Avenue. 20 is obviously our requested zoning here on this block that's highlighted in red, and then the block to the west, seven stories, that is not the current zoning, it's currently zoned for three stories. However, the LU2 table in the comprehensive plan, which provides guidance for recommended heights, provides a seven-story limit here, and then stepping down to the existing three stories once you get outside of the downtown boundary, west of St. Mary's Street. So what I want to highlight about this slide is that that transition, although it's fairly narrow, has a lot of work to do between that 40 stories and the three stories, and so this block, although only containing about a third of the transition area, actually proposes to complete well over half of the necessary transition, to really do more than its share as far as reaching that. So with that, I wanted to talk about the evaluation that was done since the last meeting. And there were a few ways that we looked at this question of what could be done as far as height, in particular to protect that school, which is the three-story property there to the west. So we looked at it from a few perspectives. One, you know, what is the impact to this building itself? What would be the impacts to residents of this building and the city as a whole? What would be the impacts to surrounding businesses as well as to the school being buffered? And so what are those different impacts? And when we look at the impact on the building itself, so really the impact on the applicant, this is the most complicated, so I'll be quick about the math here, but had to make some assumptions to evaluate that. So the UDO provides a step-back that's required, it's a 12-foot step-back, it happens between the second and the 12th floor. So using that as a starting point and thinking, what more could we offer that would provide some benefit? And so presumably, if we're trying to benefit that school property that is a block away, it would have to be something quite significant. So we started with a 50-foot step-back. So if we assume that we came in with a 50-foot step-back, that's 38 feet greater than is required under the UDO, and what is the impact to this building? And that depends a little bit on where you put it. The UDO says to put it between the second and the 12th floor. So if we plop it there in the middle at the seventh floor, what you lose there with a 50-foot step-back, that portion of the property is 100 feet wide, so it's an extra 38 feet times 100, that's 3,800 square feet per floor for 13 floors. So it comes very close to 50,000 square feet for the building, so that's a rough estimate of the impact itself. Conservatively, that's probably 26 residential units. Residential is generally what gets built downtown these days. So that's the impact to the building itself. As far as the residents, future residents of this building would be concerned, the impact is simply that those 26 households would have to go somewhere else, and as far as impact on the city is concerned, we weren't able to identify where else should those units go. This is a location identified in the comprehensive plan as having the least impacts, as far as impacts of new residents, of new uses on traffic, on utility systems, all sorts of things. This is, you know, sitting in the middle of our downtown designation frequent transit area here in the urban format that's on your screen. So in addition to impacts on the building itself and its future residents, impacts to surrounding businesses, we could only think that surrounding businesses would want to have these additional residents, who, you know, again, can't find a place in the city where these residents could have more impact on more local businesses than here in the center of downtown. And then finally, the impact on the school itself being buffered. We had trouble identifying an impact, you know, the school's a block away, and as far as the impact on the school, I think it would be difficult to see a real physical difference from that distance, and the distance would be an operational one, so perhaps some of their school families are coming from farther, creating more traffic, more need for parking. Without being able to identify a concrete or even obvious benefit to that school of that step-back, and seeing that there are negative impacts for city zone policy, for the future residents, for the building itself, you know, our thought was in just stepping back this property, again, sort of doing its part, doing more than its part to accomplish the transition goals for height, and essentially, we simply couldn't find a downside.
But just so I can get a sense by show of hands, is there anyone here today in the public who wishes to speak on any of the proposed changes or any other aspect of this case that was not discussed previously? Then, seeing none, I will bring it back to the table for questions and comments. Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'm going to move to approve. If you'll give me a second to look it up. Somebody gets there first. Yeah.
Yeah. Chair Miller, for zoning case Z 8421, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated October 24th, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of a zoning amendment.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Alwell has seconded. Any further discussion or debates on the merits of the motion? Seeing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously, seven to zero. Moving on to item D3, rezoning case Z 2623 at Glenwood Avenue. We first heard this case at our October 10th meeting where we received a staff presentation heard from the public. This case was deferred to allow the applicant time to submit revised conditions. I will turn to Matthew Burns for a brief staff presentation focusing on any updates since our last meeting.
Good morning. Good morning, Planning Commission members. Res zoning request Z 2623 first appeared at the October 10th meeting, and the case has not changed since its first appearance. The applicant submitted revised zoning conditions after the deadline for submission. Therefore, any changes are not reflected in the staff report. The revisions added a fourth condition which says not less than 80% of the Glenwood Avenue frontage shall be occupied by a building facade located not more than 15 feet from the right-of-way boundary. The conditions that you've already seen at the last meeting are here. They propose prohibiting certain uses, dedicating an eight-doc bike-share easement, and one public art installation to be located on-site. The proposal is consistent overall with the comprehensive plan. It's inconsistent with part of the future land use map guidance of office and residential mixed-use, and is consistent with urban form map. The deadline for action is November 25th, and the next PC meeting before that deadline is November 14th.
Thank you very much. So I can get a sense, are there any members of the public here who wish to speak on this case? Then, seeing none, I would like to bring it back to the table and to kick off, see if the applicant could come and discuss the status of the added condition.
Thank you. Good morning, Molly Stewart, Morning Star Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant. Couple of updates for you today with respect to the condition that was submitted after the deadline for this meeting. There's been some discussion about that one with the decision to withdraw that. But I did want to address the height request that we heard at the last meeting, and that was where, that was the reason that we kind of went back on this one, to think about that request and what was possible with respect to height and with respect to protecting the area just outside of the downtown boundary. So I'll go through this fairly quickly. You see on your screen, it's a little hard to read, but this is where the comprehensive plan defines the boundaries of downtown. And I just wanted to highlight that those downtown transition areas are part of downtown, so they are not what's being buffered. They are the attempt to make sure that downtown is buffering itself to everything that's outside of it. So those transitions become important. And if you zoom in on the block where this site is located, you can see that a portion of it is located within that transition zone. So that transition zone is fairly narrow, only about a block and a half, and about a third of it is located on this block. So I want to be careful with this slide because these numbers represent different things. So we'll go through them one at a time. And I want to start over on the right-hand side where we have that 40, which is the current zoning height limit for the site just across the street on the east side of Glenwood Avenue. 20 is obviously our requested zoning here on this block that's highlighted in red. And then, the block to the west, seven stories, that is not the current zoning. It's currently zoned for three stories. However, the LU2 table in the comprehensive plan, which provides guidance for recommended heights, provides a seven-story limit here. And then stepping down to the existing three stories once you get outside of the downtown boundary, west of St. Mary's Street. So what I want to highlight about this slide is that that transition, although it's fairly narrow, has a lot of work to do between that 40 stories and the three stories. And so this block, although only containing about a third of the transition area, actually proposes to complete well over half of the necessary transition, to really do more than its share as far as reaching that. So with that, I wanted to talk about the evaluation that was done since the last meeting. And there were a few ways that we looked at this question of what could be done as far as height, in particular to protect that school, which is the three-story property there to the west. So we looked at it from a few perspectives. One, you know, what is the impact to this building itself? What would be the impacts to residents of this building and the city as a whole? What would be the impacts to surrounding businesses as well as to the school being buffered? And so what are those different impacts? And when we look at the impact on the building itself, so really the impact on the applicant, this is the most complicated, so I'll be quick about the math here, but had to make some assumptions to evaluate that. So the UDO provides a step-back that's required. It's a 12-foot step-back. It happens between the second and the 12th floor. So using that as a starting point and thinking, what more could we offer that would provide some benefit? And so presumably, if we're trying to benefit that school property that is a block away, it would have to be something quite significant. So we started with a 50-foot step-back. So if we assume that we came in with a 50-foot step-back, that's 38 feet greater than is required under the UDO. And what is the impact to this building? And that depends a little bit on where you put it. The UDO says to put it between the second and the 12th floor. So if we plop it there in the middle at the seventh floor, what you lose there with a 50-foot step-back, that portion of the property is 100 feet wide, so it's an extra 38 feet times 100, that's 3,800 square feet per floor for 13 floors. So it comes very close to 50,000 square feet for the building. So that's a rough estimate of the impact itself. Conservatively, that's probably 26 residential units. Residential is generally what gets built downtown these days. So that's the impact to the building itself. As far as the residents, future residents of this building would be concerned, the impact is simply that those 26 households would have to go somewhere else. And as far as impact on the city is concerned, we weren't able to identify where else should those units go. This is a location identified in the comprehensive plan as having the least impacts, as far as impacts of new residents, of new uses on traffic, on utility systems, all sorts of things. This is, you know, sitting in the middle of our downtown designation frequent transit area here in the urban form map that's on your screen. So in addition to impacts on the building itself and its future residents, impacts to surrounding businesses, we could only think that surrounding businesses would want to have these additional residents, who, you know, again, can't find a place in the city where these residents could have more impact on more local businesses than here in the center of downtown. And then finally, the impact on the school itself being buffered. We had trouble identifying an impact. You know, the school's a block away, and as far as the impact on the school, I think it would be difficult to see a real physical difference from that distance. And the distance would be an operational one. So perhaps some of their school families are coming from farther, creating more traffic, more need for parking. Without being able to identify a concrete or even obvious benefit to that school of that step-back, and seeing that there are negative impacts for city zone policy, for the future residents, for the building itself, you know, our thought was in just stepping back this property, again, sort of doing its part, doing more than its part to accomplish the transition goals for height, and essentially, we simply couldn't find a downside to putting density here where the comprehensive plan calls for it. So there was a lot of thought and discussion around this issue and what could be done, and we simply couldn't find a benefit to any party of making that happen. So that's where we landed on that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And just to confirm, there's no one here in the public who wishes to speak in opposition on this case? Thank you. Bringing it back to the table. Any other questions and comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Reeves.
Yeah, I just want to point out, you know, this is, I think this is probably an appropriate height from the area, but I would like to see low-income subsidized housing on-site here. I think downtown, we're seeing more and more that there's almost no affordable housing on-site in any of these projects, especially this side of downtown, the west side and north side, has no affordable housing at all. And I think when we look at the indicators here in the staff, the demographic indicators, sorry, you can see how much lower the low-income population is. It's a much wider area. It's a more highly educated area. I think this would be a prime place to have low-income affordable housing on-site in this building. So I'd like to see more projects like that in general in Raleigh, but especially in this area.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Alwell.
Thank you, Chair Miller. I just wanted to note that I had made a comment about the frontage, and I realize that that condition has been pulled, but after discussion with the applicant and study of the development patterns and infrastructure in the area, I'm not concerned that we're going to get a frontage at actual construction time that will be contrary to what we're looking for. So I'm satisfied with the removal of that condition.
Thank you. Other comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Haver, I know you had comments last time as well.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the applicant's diligence in examining the height. Quite frankly, I made the comments in the previous meeting that I'm in support of this project. I'm not sure I fully agree, that there just are absolutely no benefits to looking at reducing the height along there. I do understand that the step-back does play a role and is helpful in that. So again, I appreciate the diligence. I have talked with the applicant on multiple occasions, and so generally, I'm in support of this application.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond? Has the applicant considered any affordable housing conditions in this project?
So not ruling it out, well, as a condition, I should revise that. No, not ruling it out as a possibility for the future. The fact is that with the markets in turmoil, it isn't abundantly clear what can happen here in the future and what the timeline will look like. I understand financing is just tricky. So there's just a lot of nerves about locking into that today.
Any other comments and questions from the commissioners? Nope. Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Sure. I'm going to move to approve. So I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated for October 24th, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment. This recommendation also includes an amendment to the future land use map to this extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the merits of this motion? Seeing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? That motion passes six to one. Thank you. Moving on to item, what's that? Item D4, rezoning case Z 2723 at Dawson Assemblage. We first heard this case at our October 10th meeting, and the case was deferred to this meeting to allow the applicant time to submit revised conditions. I will turn back to Matthew Burns for a brief staff presentation focusing on updates since our last meeting.
Good morning again. Since its last appearance, the applicant for Z 27 has added two new zoning conditions. In addition to number one, which you've already seen that prohibits certain uses, they've added one condition related to a public art installation that will be submitted for review by Raleigh Arts Commission through the Public Art and Design Board. And they also added a condition that prohibits certain exterior materials from being used, which include EIFS, vinyl siding, and rough-sown wood. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the future land use map guidance for Central Business District and the urban form map. There are no outstanding issues, and the deadline for action is November 25th.
Thank you very much. We have previously heard a staff presentation and heard from the public, but by show of hands, is anyone here in the public who wishes to speak on any of the proposed changes on this case? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the table. I'd like to thank the applicant for those new conditions and see if we have questions or comments from the commissioners on those.
I think I was the one also in this case, excuse me, that held it up a little bit, and I did talk on multiple occasions with the applicant, just like the previous one. I do appreciate the efforts, and I'm ready to recommend approval if there's no other conversation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Alwell?
I just have a quick comment. I believe that I don't see any justification for denying this case, and I plan to vote to approve it. But I am somewhat concerned that this is on one of the major bicycle corridors identified in the planning documents, and I would request that transportation staff be as proactive as they can in the future for safeguarding and being intentional about what we're looking to see along these corridors, because the development is happening and we're losing the opportunity to impact these corridors.
Thank you. Is that something that would be part of site plan or part of a rezoning case? I agree with you. Do you know?
I imagine that it could happen at both stages, but I'm not really sure what the specifics would be, and I don't have any good recommendations to make or I would be making them. But I would like to see some sort of bike parking, a dedication of right-of-way for separated lanes. These developments are going in, and we're going to lose the chance to get anything.
Thank you. Could staff address how the bike lanes would be affected with respect to this development and along this corridor?
Monique Guyat with Transportation. Are you able to repeat your question for me, please?
Certainly. I noted at our last meeting that this development is taking place on a corridor that has been identified as a major bicycle corridor in the T2, T3? It's one of the transportation maps that designate priority bicycle corridors. And in speaking with the applicant, they communicated that they had been in contact with staff and that there had not been any definite requests about conditions that could be offered to address improving that corridor. And as I understand it, this is within the downtown core, and there will not be separated bicycle facilities implemented as part of a T3, excuse me, yeah, tier-three site plan. And so if we're not getting a separated bike lane, we're not dedicating right-of-way, we're not getting bike parking carved out, it seems like the bike corridor is not being addressed in these developments.
Yes. I believe, at least when, if this property were to come in with a site plan, we would be working in addition with the developer, with our bike and ped program manager, to be able to get adequate infrastructure within the existing right-of-way that corresponds with our priority listings.
Be keeping an eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bennett?
Question for you, Commissioner. So if you'd like to see those things, then why not request it as part of the rezoning?
I don't feel like I have the transportation expertise to dictate what sort of infrastructure improvements would be best to address the overall corridor that we're looking to get out of this plan. I'd like that to come from the transportation experts.
I think part of my heartburn with, just in general, is on issues like this. It's like we see a need, but it's tough to get it done on a rezoning-by-rezoning basis. And I just feel like, you know, we want to see more bike infrastructure. We want to see more equitable development. We want to see, and it just feels like these things need to be done at more of a comprehensive level. And I'm frustrated that our comp plan seems behind what we're trying to do, and we're locked into, well, we're not locked in. We can make whatever recommendation we want, but it feels like sometimes we don't have the justification or the necessary tools to require, to request something in a rezoning, or even to recommend denial because it seems consistent with the comprehensive plan. But sometimes the comprehensive plan, lots of times the comprehensive plan seems out of step with the priorities and the vision for what we're trying to achieve. So that's not necessarily related just to this case. It just speaks to just the frustration I have in general. I wish we could, I wish the policies that we were determining consistency with were actually consistent with the vision and the priorities that we have. And it seems like they're not. So it feels like we're continually recommending approval for developments or rezoneings that we're not totally comfortable with, but it's because it's consistent with the comprehensive plan that we're not totally comfortable with.
Perhaps a good topic for our retreat next week, something that we could address. Thank you for that comment.
But I think I understood that from staff that that would be looked at during site plan.
But not the comprehensive plan, just the site plan.
Right, but I'm saying that Commissioner Alwell's concern about the bike lane, which is understandable, right? I just heard from staff, I just want to make sure you understand that that will be reviewed and looked at during site plan. So I understand your comment, but I think his specific one on this project will be addressed during site plan is what I heard from staff.
If I could respond, we have seen developments along this corridor, and we've yet to see a separated bike facility as part of any kind of development or any kind of capital project come through downtown. We have that one pop-up lane that's four or five years old now, and we haven't had any progress on that since. And once the zoning is approved, the applicant will be required to follow the UDO. And they could certainly opt to provide more than what's required, but I have seen developers around North Hills in particular downgrade existing bicycle facilities because they're following the UDO instead of what's requested by staff at the time of development.
Perhaps another topic for the retreat. Thank you. Any other questions and comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to motion to recommend approval in light of, again, the comments from my fellow commissioners, which I appreciate. I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated October 24th, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment for zoning case Z 2723.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Rains has seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. Making notes about the retreat next week as well. Okay, moving on to new business. These requests have not, or I guess this request has not appeared on a previous planning commission agenda, so we will hear a full staff presentation and applicant presentation, and we will hear from the public. The first item is E1 rezoning case Z 3423 at a block bounded by Hillsborough Street, North Harrington Street, Morgan Street, and Dawson Street. This case is to rezone approximately 0.79 acres from downtown mixed-use 20-stories shop front to downtown mixed-use 40-stories shop front conditional use. We will now turn to Margaret Tartalla for a presentation from the city planning staff.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Tartalla. I'm the case planner for Z 3423. It is at 309 and 327 Hillsborough Street, and the request is, again, to rezone from downtown mixed-use 20 stories to downtown mixed-use 40 stories with conditional uses. The deadline for action is on December 9th. This is a site that is in the middle of downtown, and so the zoning that is existing around the site is also downtown, ranging from 12 to 40 stories. To orient you a little bit, the site is between Hillsborough and Morgan Street. The Raleigh Crossing building is just to the east, and Hargett Street, I mean, sorry, Harrington Street is just to the east. So it's most of this half of the block, except for the southeast corner where Flying Saucer Here's a view of the site from the street. You can see currently, most of the site is a surface parking lot. There is one two-story building that's on the northeast corner of the site. There are two proposed conditions. The first is related to provision of space for a bike-share station if the city requests it upon site review, and the second is a public art installation. Here's a summary of what would be allowed under existing versus the proposed zoning. The main takeaway for this is it would about double the amount of dwelling units that could be built and about double the amount of office square footage as well. So there are, to reference the bike lanes, there is a striped bike lane on Hillsborough Street, and there's a separated bike lane on Harrington. In general, it's in the middle of downtown. It's very walkable and bike-able in this area, and there are many jobs in close proximity. There are four bus routes that serve the site, three are Go Raleigh, and there's one Go Triangle that runs along Hillsborough. In terms of affordability, the rezoning request doesn't really change the affordability analysis because the underlying zoning designation doesn't change. This particular request does not include subsidized units. The area around the site is less diverse in higher income overall, but rents have been increasing quite a bit more than the city, so about 41% for this area versus 25% for the city overall. So there is demand for additional units in this area. The downtown mixed-use zoning is consistent with the future land use designation of Central Business Districts, and the shop front frontage is consistent with the urban form designations of downtown and frequent transit area. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan overall, and the future land use map and urban form map. There are many policies that support this. You can take a look at them. This is the first slide. And the second. No inconsistent policies were identified. Again, the deadline for action is December 9th, and I can answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. Turning to public comment, we will start off by the applicant and those in favor. You have a total of 10 minutes to speak. And as folks come to the podium, please introduce yourself.
Good morning again. Molly Stewart, Morning Star Law Group, here on behalf of the Fallon Company. The Fallon Company's specialty is mixed-use urban projects and placemaking. And here at the top of your screen, you can see their transformation of the fan pier in Boston. They are also the developer of the neighboring building, Raleigh Crossing. So the request is a very simple one. As you heard, the idea is to keep the underlying zoning and only to increase the height from 20 to 40 stories. That's in line with surrounding zonings and with the goal of increasing rent. That's in line with surrounding zonings and with the goal of increasing residential density in downtown. It's just another view of the proposed zoning with the surrounding permitted heights. In addition to the general need for more downtown residents to support retailers, including at Raleigh Crossing, the shape of the site is also a driver of this request. So at 40 stories, it's possible to build a viable building with a more rational shape to it. At 20 stories, it would be necessary to maximize this irregular shape and build much more inefficiently. So the request aligns with all comprehensive plan guidance, with surrounding zonings, and with the site's specific needs, as well as with some general guidance recently published by the Brookings Institute acknowledging the widespread issue shared by downtowns nationwide. Their number one recommendation on how to help our downtowns is to make it easier to build new housing on underutilized lots downtown. And you see there the existing parking lot on the site on your screen. So for these reasons, we bring you this very simple proposal that is reasonable and in the public interest, and we request your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak in support of this project? Seeing none, we'll move to the opposition. Is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition of this project? Seeing none as well, I'll bring it back to the table. Questions and comments from our commissioners? Commissioner Otwell.
So I guess I'm just going to be talking about bikes all day today. I have a question for staff about this. So we've been seeing more and more offers to dedicate land and construction and efforts towards creating bike stations for our bike share. And I'm wondering, have we ever taken any of the developers up on any of these offers? Is there a future expansion planned for the bike share system? And how impactful are these offers? How likely are they likely, how likely are they to be taken up on and implemented? How many extra stations do we really need downtown?
Good morning. I'm Monique Gait with Transportation. Unfortunately, I am not fully prepared to answer that question. I think if I can consult with our Bike and Ped Program Manager, Barbara Godwin, about the details of how our bike plan, not bike plan, our bike share program is working and how we're seeing that come into developments that are coming online, I can consult with her and get back to you on that question.
Thank you. I'd like to note that this is not going to impact my vote on this case. I don't think this is on the developers. It's a question for staff, and perhaps it's something we could bring up at our retreat as a more holistic kind of item.
Sure. Another location, depending on the agenda there, and at the chair's discretion, the, perhaps the Infrastructure and Mobility Committee might be a good place to, to look at that as well. So we could talk about that now, or we could talk about that offline and figure out the right place to address some of those very good questions. Thank you. Other questions and comments from the commissioners?
It won't be a surprise to know that I'd love to see affordable housing here.
Yeah.
There's already 20-story zoning available, and, you know, as the, as we heard earlier, like, economic conditions right now are not prime for building possibly like this or financing things like this. But I think if that's being the case, even more so, it'd be great to see a plan for affordable housing here if we're doubling the amount of stories available on a site like this.
Thank you. I totally agree. Is, has the applicant considered providing any conditions related to affordable housing?
Yes, the applicant is actively looking at that question, and I think that there's, there's, there have been ongoing conversations, and I think the open question right now is simply, what is, what is the city looking for in a downtown location? So it is absolutely something that the applicant is open to.
Is that something that you would like guidance from the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yes, it is. That'd be very helpful. Thank you. Sure. Any Commissioner Peeler or any other commissioners have any specific thoughts on the affordable housing topic or specifics?
I mean, I think it's just hard to know exactly what to recommend. We don't know what's going to be built there. So with more information about that, I think that would be a lot easier. But I'd, I'd be happy to sit down with anyone to talk about it, so.
Commissioner Bennett?
I think if, I'm just going to reiterate my previous point. I think if we had policy guidance, then it wouldn't be on the planning commissioners to say what should be included in a rezoning. If we had guidance that prioritized diversity, equity, affordability in our downtown area, then it would be obvious what to include. And I'm just increasingly frustrated that we don't. I'm happy to talk to the applicant, but, I mean, we've already started this ball rolling downtown, and we see what type of housing we're getting downtown, so it's unlikely that we're going to see it in this. And I don't think it's on the Planning Commission because we have very limited tools. It's on the policy guidance. And another frustration is that by the time we get the policy guidance updated, all these rezonings will have been approved. So I'm just frustrated today, that's all.
Commissioner Heps?
Haven't we recently had some applicants come through and offer certain percentages and dollar amounts that have come forward without the applicant requesting from the Planning Commission what the specifics are? I think in this case, if the applicant is willing to go back and, and look at it, it seems like it's reasonable to say it's something we're interested in. There have been some examples that have come forward that we've approved that perhaps there's still some discussion about it versus just assuming that it's not going to happen. Because what I heard the applicant say is they're willing to, to consider it, so I'm not sure how others feel about that.
I agree with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
I agree. We have seen some conditions come through. We've seen a lot of cases where there's a dedication of a certain amount of dollars. That doesn't put affordable housing downtown. It puts affordable housing where we see affordable housing. So of course, I'm always happy to see conditions, but we're also told that we have to tiptoe around conditions regarding affordable housing. So where we've seen a lot of the conditions, it's at the council table. I don't know what we even are authorized to do other than to continually express our frustration that we don't see any. I mean, sure, I would love to see conditions around affordable housing. What can we do at this table?
So perhaps to clarify to the applicant, but think if the question was, is the Planning Commission interested in affordable housing conditions, it sounds like yes, with perhaps a focus more on percentage dedications over, over dollars dedicated to a fund.
But then how do we do that with this applicant, and we didn't do it with previous ones that were downtown? That's the frustration. If we're going to say that, then we, that needs to be generalized to, to all of the, these high-density requests that we're getting in our downtown area. I would feel uncomfortable telling this applicant, we want to see you do this, and we didn't tell the previous one that was downtown to do that. It, that feels inequitable as well. So I'll underscore again, if there is general policy guidance, we're not looking at it on a rezoning-by-rezoning basis, and this applicant should do it, but we don't request another applicant. It's the policy.
I agree. It sounds like the difference for me in this versus the last case is the applicant here seems very willing to address this within their own model and the difference between 40 stories and 20 stories. And financing concerns are perhaps more nuanced and detailed than I fully appreciate. But if an applicant, in this, just saying why I'm treating this one a bit differently is because it sounds like the applicant's model in this case may be able to afford that. But I completely agree with you in having more clear guidance on downtown and a regular, on a, from a comp plan amendment standpoint, not just case by case. Other questions? Commissioner Otwell?
Thank you, Chair Miller. I, I recognize the situation our city is in with respect to affordable housing, and I think it's a serious problem that needs a lot of effort and investment from our city to address. Uncomfortable de facto requiring certain developers to include it as a blanket kind of requirement when we're looking at upzoning. We include conditions in these rezoning cases to mitigate potential harms that would result as a product of the upzoning or whatever the change in zoning that occurs. And in certain cases, if the rezoning were to induce or incentivize the demolition or the removal of affordable housing, that's a clear harm, and I think we would be justified in looking for conditions to mitigate that. In a case like this, I don't see a harm in following the comp plan and allowing another 20 stories on top of what is already allowed by right. If they develop by right, there's no affordable housing going in. And if we allow a higher envelope, that does not further impact the affordable housing situation in downtown besides potentially adding more units to downtown, which could help saturate the market, and it will not provide affordable housing in the way that we're talking about it, but it could temper the rise in rents and property prices downtown. So, and, and as Commissioner Bennett noted, requiring this of some applicants and not of other applicants is inconsistent. If the applicant, if the developer would like to include affordable housing voluntarily from the get-go, I honor that. I'll support it, and I think it's great and would vote for it. But I would not look to require or imply that I would vote against this kind of case if there was a lack of affordable housing included in the conditions.
Well put. Thank you. Other, Commissioner Bennett?
This'll be my last comment, and I agree with what Commissioner Otwell just said. I don't think this rezoning itself is creating a harm. I think the harm has already been done, and we're just piling on. I think the, the demographic data that was presented in the staff report shows the harm that has already been done, and I think it has to be addressed, again, at a policy level to try to mitigate that harm. We can't do it here at this table on a rezoning-by-rezoning basis, especially with picking and choosing which applicant should include affordable housing. I think it's clear, if we walk around downtown, that the harm has already been done. The lack of diversity, the lack of affordability, that is a harm, and it's up to the policy guidance to fix the harm.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners?
Chairman, just a quick question for Mr. York. If you can remind me the limitation that the state has put on municipalities to, to not have the authority to require some level of affordable housing within a policy or within some sort of statute. Is there, is there, I forget where that state impact comes from?
Yeah, we don't have authority to require a certain percentage of affordability in all developments, or in all developments in a certain area and so forth. We, we can't impose that requirement. It can only be imposed if the property owner through a conditional zoning adds a condition including that requirement. We don't have, we can only do what the General Assembly gives us authority to do, and we have no authority to do that. And so that's why we have stated in the past that in the comp plan, the policies around affordability are aspirational. I mean, there are things that we can't back up. Usually, you have comp plan that have these policies, and then you adopt a UDO that enforce those policies, right? But you can't enforce all the policies that most cities' comp plans address because we lack the authority to do that from the General Assembly. And so they provide guidance for planning boards, governing boards, and applicants as to what kind of conditions might be reasonable to address the impacts of a development. Because that's what the purpose of the conditions are, are to address impacts of the development. And so that's why we have seen in some cases where naturally occurring affordable housing exists in a property and they're getting ready to redevelop it. And we have seen NOAA-related zoning conditions, you know, that deal with extended termination notices and moving assistance and things of that nature. And we've, and we've seen set-aside conditions for, you know, including a certain number of, or a certain percentage of affordable housing on-site, as well as contribution based on a certain percentage of entitlement through the rezoning. Now, the city attorney's offices work with our folks who administer the affordable housing funds and grants and so forth, the gap, the gap financing. And we understand that the city basically invests $40,000 per unit, per dwelling unit, when it provides gap financing for these affordable housing projects. And so that $40,000 per unit has sort of been the number that has been used in the zoning conditions, so that it's, you can look at it, you see the dollar amount of a offered donation, and you can quickly calculate how many units that would provide.
Thank you. It just seems like without having true authority, we can follow the guidance and recommend, kind of tell it a word in the face, but it's really up to the applicant to come and, and say that, yeah, we're going to supply these.
I will say, though, that there are municipalities that are requiring affordability in policies. Now, they may be challenged later, but I just read one, a pretty big one, that required a certain amount of affordability as a policy guidance. I mean, I actually read the staff report to the rezoning, to the Planning Commission, and it said, this is inconsistent with the affordability requirement. And so I, I think it's up to the comfort level, I guess, of the municipality and the attorney's office. I think there are ways that we can work within the authority we have, but again, it, it's at the policy level. I mean, we certainly wouldn't require it of this applicant and not another one unless there was something really compelling about this particular one. But there are municipalities that are requiring it as policy.
And I completely agree. It should be consistent for every applicant coming in, offering this level of residential upzoning.
Commissioner Peeler?
Just as a question to you, again, for what you were just saying, while laws may not allow counsel to do that, I mean, we're a commission, and our recommendations are not bound by law, so we can technically recommend whatever we want, right? I mean, the laws of the General Assembly don't bind what we can recommend as a commission, do they?
You're not the deciding body.
Right.
Right. You're not the deciding body.
Our word is not law.
And so you can make recommendations, yes, and the council can follow those or not. All I'm saying is if you made a recommendation that said, deny this case unless they provide affordable housing, I mean, if that's the only issue that you're, if that, if that's going to be the litmus, litmus test of all zonings is whether or not it includes some affordable housing. housing requirement, for numerous reasons, I would caution against that.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
But, but yes, your recommendation is not, does not bind anyone, okay? And you don't have to agree with the staff's comp plan analysis. Staff does that based on their experience to help you all in reviewing it, but the city council and the planning commission are not bound by these analyses that are in the write-up or in what's listed as a public benefit in a draft consistency statement motion. We do that as a courtesy to help you all for convenience, but if you disagree with anything in those statements, you, you are able to change it. We just need, if you're going to change the language in the consistency statement, to announce what that is so everyone knows what you're approving. So if there's a policy listed as consistent that you disagree with, you can say, "I approved the consistency statement with the removal of Policy X as listed as consistent," or something like that. You're not bound by that.
Got it. And so, the, I guess, to piggyback off what Commissioner Bennett was asking, I mean, the towns that are, and the places, I guess, that are, you know, requiring that in their comp plans or their UDOs or that are trying to put affordable housing in these projects as, you know, whether they're conditions or requirements, do they have express permission, quote-unquote, to do that, or are they?
I'm unaware of any local legislation. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but I'm unaware of any local legislation authorizing any municipality to impose affordable housing requirements.
Perhaps we could wrap this into our conversation at the retreat on what the UDO, looking at the comp plan, excuse me, because it's a very good topic, and figuring out where the limitations are. To your express question on what we can and cannot recommend here or otherwise, I think it's been explained to me that it's perhaps problematic for us to make an express recommendation to council to do something illegal, such as vote no on this case unless the following conditions are added. But we can sort of express our policy guidance to them, saying that there are specific conditions, you know, you can vote no or with no recommendation, and with a recommendation that council consider, thinking about some conditions and things like that, too. So, that's sort of the nuance of those two issues, yeah.
I appreciate that this feels gray to the commission, which is say that you have actually offered some pretty explicit input to the applicant this morning. You have said that you would like to see them include affordable units in their offer, and that you prefer that to a contribution. And I appreciate that doesn't maybe feel like a lot to you, but that's actually telling the applicant something that they can work with. So I don't think you should feel helpless or frustrated. You've actually offered pretty substantive input in the arena, you know, given the parameters of the arena we're living in, you've done, I think, very, very, given, offered very specific guidance.
Yes. And speaking of which, I think where we have come down is obviously we want to be consistent across the board. Again, the difference between this case and some other cases that we've heard this morning and in general, it sounds like the applicant in this case is willing to offer some conditions related to affordable housing, and we have given them some guidance on what we might like to see there. Could I just verify with the applicant that that is a condition that they would be willing to look at and consider before our next meeting, timing-wise, or which meeting?
Yes, thank you. The next meeting would, would work. We certainly can appreciate the challenge you're going through as we're going through it ourselves. So, we will certainly reach out. We've heard some invitations to do that and try to find something that will help the situation.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Before I defer to our next meeting, Commissioner O'Haver?
Yeah, I just sometimes oversimplify things, but I'm going to go out a little bit of a limb here. I feel like as a, as a commission, we applaud applicants who bring forward conditions that, that start to address some of our affordable housing issues. Certainly, lots of times, we understand that, that it's maybe making a small dent, but we applaud the applicant. We say, "Thank you very much." In this case, I would like to applaud the applicant for being willing to go back and think about adding a condition, even though it's downtown, even though it's not solving affordable housing, they are coming forward and saying they're willing to do it. So I want to, I want to be consistent and applaud this applicant for, for being willing to bring that forward and say, "Yes, let's go back and talk about it and see if we can figure out some conditions that work for everyone." So, not disagree with any of the comments about the policy. I know there's been a lot of frustration on this commission over the years about affordable housing. I think as a community, we're frustrated about the lack of it. So again, I want to say thank you to this, to this applicant. And I think the difference is exactly what Chair Miller said. They vocalize that they're willing to do it. The same representative on a previous project said they've looked at it, and it wasn't, wasn't realistic opportunity in that particular case, but in this one, it could be. And so, I want to say, I think we should applaud that.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners?
Then, without objection, I will hold this case until our November 14th Planning Commission meeting to give the applicant time to consider providing new conditions related to affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, Item E2, Historic Designations Overview. At our commission retreat in 2022, the commission asked staff to provide us with more information about the local historic designations. As a result, the city's historic preservation staff are here to provide us with an overview of those designations, including Raleigh Historic Landmarks and Historic Overlay Districts, along with the regulatory and designation process.
Hello, everyone. Let me remember. There we go. My name is Colette Kenehan. I am a senior preservation planner and one of the staff liaison to the RHDC. I'm here, as you said, to give you a crash course in historic designations in Raleigh. I'll be focusing mostly on local historic designations, specifically what is a Historic Overlay District, what is a Raleigh Historic Landmark, the Places Worthy of Preservation list, and touching very briefly on the National Register. But first, to orient you at a very high level, in Raleigh, there are primarily two types of designation program, the federal or state, who tend to work in tandem. The state manages the paperwork and the processing, while the federal makes the official decisions and local. I'm not going to spend too much time here, since we'll be digging into the local programs in the next few slides, but it's important to note that overall, the federal programs are all primarily honorary, while local programs are regulatory. It's also useful to know that different states handle this process very differently. In North Carolina, the state manages a study list as part of the process. The study list is designed to be a tool for local preservation planning. The list acknowledges the potential significance of properties and districts long before they can be formally designated to the National Register, and it also helps to screen out properties that are clearly not eligible for historic designation or unlikely to be eligible for official designation. So, to start, the local Historic Overlay District might be the type of preservation planning that you're most familiar with. A historic district is a collection of buildings. It is most often a neighborhood or a commercial corridor, and Raleigh's historic districts are historic overlay districts, a zoning overlay that is designed to protect the overall physical representation of historic neighborhoods. You may have heard the phrase "managed change" alongside historic districts. This is accomplished through a design review process that prioritizes the preservation of historic building features and overall exterior appearance. This review process is called a Certificate of Appropriateness, or a COA, which I'll get deeper into in a few slides. But overall, the basic structure of a historic overlay district and the COA process are derived from the general statutes. The implementation process largely follows the standard process of a rezoning, but with several more initial steps prior to officially filing that rezoning application led by the neighborhood to demonstrate neighborhood support, prepare a report on the history and current state of the neighborhood. So, with most cities, historic districts are concentrated where the historic development of the city is earliest. Raleigh is no different here. All of the historic overlay districts are located very close to downtown, and overall, only about 1% or 1,400 of all of Raleigh's parcels are included in a historic overlay A Raleigh Historic Landmark is the local historic designation of an individual building, structure, site, or object, and it is recognized by an official ordinance for its historic significance. The Raleigh Historic Development Commission must find that the property is of historic, prehistoric, architectural, archaeological, or cultural significance, and the property should also possess integrity of design, setting, workmanship, materials, feeling, or association. And just as I mentioned in the historic overlay districts, this program is also very strictly directed by the general statutes. All landmark applications are owner-initiated, and while the general statutes do give city council the authority to designate over owner objection, this power has, to my knowledge, never been used and is very unlikely to ever occur. So, similar to the historic overlay districts, the landmark properties are highly concentrated inside the Belt Line, where the majority of the city's oldest properties exist. There are a few properties outside the Belt Line, notably Yates Mill, St. Matthew's School, Oakview Park, Carolina Pines, and a few other estate homes that are designated as landmarks further out into the city's limits. So the general statutes also provide a directive for what the city is able to do when it comes to preservation. One of the lesser-known requirements is that the city maintain an inventory of properties of historic, architectural, prehistoric, or cultural significance. This list is designed to be a planning tool. It does not guarantee that a property on the list will become a landmark if an application is filed. We previously referred to this list as a study list, which made things confusing due to the state's true official study list. So about two to three years ago, we renamed this list to be the Places Worthy of Preservation. This is, this list is maintained by the Research Committee of the Raleigh Historic Development Commission and is regularly updated. A few months ago, the committee decided to begin a campaign to send five letters a month to property owners of properties that are on the list, to connect with the property owner, to gauge interest in landmarking, and inform them that that is a possibility potentially for their property. To be added to the list, typically, that occurs when citywide studies are completed. So we anticipate adding new properties to this list after the completion of the currently in-progress Black History Inherited and LGBTQIA+ Historic Context Studies. So, what does local designation not do? It does not protect properties from demolition. That is a North Carolina state law. The state law prohibits the denial of demolition through the COA process. The maximum type of denial, not officially, is a 365-day delay. That delay should be used to engage with the property owner to find alternatives to demolition. It does not require that a property be restored to a historic appearance. It does not restrict the use of the property or require any review for interior alterations, and it does not freeze a property in time. So I mentioned earlier the Certificate of Appropriateness, or COA, process. The regulation associated with the Historic Overlay District or Raleigh Historic Landmark are tied to the exterior changes to the building, focusing on building materials, landscape features, architectural features, additions, demolition, or new construction. There are two types of Historic Overlay District in Raleigh, general, and the street-side. In the general historic district in Raleigh Historic Landmarks, 100% of all exterior changes on the property are reviewed and regulated. In the street-side Historic Overlay District, largely what is seen from the street, there is an official definition in the UDO with diagrams about the review area, but is essentially the first 50% of the structure. All COA projects are reviewed for congruity with the special character of the historic district or landmark and using the design guidelines for Raleigh Historic Districts and Landmarks. There are two categories of COA application, minor work, which is administratively reviewed by staff. These are things like short fences, installing sheds smaller than 140 square feet, changing paint color, or major work applications, which are reviewed by the COA committee in a quasi-judicial hearing. These are substantially larger projects like new construction, additions, demolition, and tall fences. And as I mentioned before, the interior arrangement or rearrangement of these projects is not So to touch briefly on the National Register, this is a national program. It was authorized by the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. It is the official list of the nation's historic places worthy of preservation. It includes both individual properties and districts. It is honorary, not regulatory, and it is the first step to eligibility for federal and state historic rehabilitation tax credits. Similar to our historic districts and landmarks, Raleigh's National Register sites and districts are pretty well-concentrated towards the center of the city. Overall, there are 110 individually designated National Register properties. There are 29 National Register districts and two National Historic Landmarks in the And that was just about as fast as I could sum that up. Are there any questions?
Thank you for that. Bringing it to the table, questions and comments from the commissioners?
Chair Miller, just a quick question. The process, if the Research Committee for HDC sends out a letter of interest, what is the time and economic or financial burden for the owner to go through the process to become a local designation?
That's a great question. So, when a, the Research Committee sends out letters, there is no obligation that the property owner follows through on the process. If they choose to file an application, there are two pathways. If it's a property that is pretty well-known with documentation already prepared on it, it's a slightly easier, likely more cost-effective path because that history is already developed. The property owner can choose to prepare the forms themselves or hire a consultant to prepare the application, which includes a report on the history of the property. The RHDC does have a budget to pay for some, the preparation of some reports. I think it's about two to three a year that they can elect to pay for. They have typically chosen to do that when it comes to churches, nonprofits. A lot of cemeteries, I think, have been prepared using the RHDC's budget. But it would depend on, I would say, how, how much work the consultant will need to do to research the property. I would say, potentially, on average, $1,000 to $2,000 for a small property. And if the property is designated as a landmark, the, the benefit that they get is a 50% property tax deferral. That is, as long as the property is maintained, the owner can apply for that through the Wake County Tax Office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How long that, did you say there were five letters a year? Is that what you said?
So, it has varied in the past. Lately, the, the committee has been sending five interest letters per month.
Oh, per month?
Yes. On average, I would say, prior to this year, they sent around 20 or so letters a year. Usually, it was revolving around a theme. One year, they focused on kit homes in the city. Recently, last year, was focused on places significant to Black history in the city. And a few years ago, the focus was on women's history.
Thank you, Commissioner Otwell.
Thanks. Thank you for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. So, in-
So, in general, please correct me if I'm wrong. It seems that the historic overlay districts would be mostly neighborhood-led, brought before the city, where the historical landmarks are often initiated by the city sending a letter. Is that correct?
Somewhat, yes. That's correct. When the city undertakes a study, for example, the Black History and Heritage Study that's happening now, one of the areas of focus is the Biltmore Hills neighborhood. So, we have spoken to members of that neighborhood about potential designation. That was somewhat city-led. It was identified as a gap in our research about the development of that neighborhood and John Winters's involvement. But primarily, in order for the process to advance, it must be organized by the neighborhood.
Could you discuss a little bit about the incentives or the disincentives that a property owner might have for gaining a historic landmark status or joining one of these overlays? You talked about the cost of preparing the paperwork, which is obviously a disincentive or a bar to many, to potential applicants. Were there incentives for joining this program? And otherwise, why would a property owner not want to be included in one of these districts or as a landmark?
So, the strongest incentive is for the Raleigh Historic Landmark Program, which state law allows us to request, allows them to request a 50% property tax deferral. That is, by and large, a substantial benefit to those property owners. One of the equitable gaps in local historic districts is certainly the cost and the process. I think that's something that all preservation commissions and programs are dealing with, especially when it comes to ensuring that there is not a burden to property owners who want to improve their properties. It's definitely one of the issues that we have nationwide for preservation.
For my last question, could you discuss the, perhaps, the range of enthusiasm that you get from the overlay candidates as they go through the application process? Is it usually pretty uniform, or is there a lot of contention? Or is it varied?
That's a great question. It depends on the neighborhood. Certainly, there are some neighborhoods that are very excited to gather together to research their neighborhood history and have it recognized. I think the recognition is a key benefit and interest to a lot of neighborhoods, but certainly, not all neighbors agree. The regulation aspect of a local historic district is something that every property owner needs to consider as they pursue the process, and some have led to contention. And ultimately, I think there are several districts, potential districts in the city, that have not ultimately been designated as local because of that.
Thank you. I have a question about the RHDC and the scope of authority. We have seen rezoning cases within the historic districts, and when we see those, we know that those cases have to go through the Certificate of Appropriateness process and that hearing with the RHDC. But we have also seen cases where the RHDC asks applicants that are not in a historic district to also undergo either a review or a certificate of appropriateness. I was just wondering, is that, is there policy guidance that outline for property owners that are not in a historic district about when they might be subject to this additional level of review?
Yes. So, that was the practice for a very long time. Properties that were on the city's list of places worthy of preservation, those were applications, if the property was included on that list and not officially designated, that was a situation where the commission staff would attend the rezoning pre-application meetings and inform the applicant that there is a possibility that they could have a designated historic property if they chose to pursue that path. And at that point, they would be referred to the RHDC for comment as well. Maybe it was two years ago, on a recommendation from the city attorney, we are no longer sending non-designated properties to the RHDC for comment.
I see. Even if, are they being invited to but not required to?
No.
Okay, no longer being invited to?
We continue to provide staff comment when relevant, but they are not taking that next step to RHDC for comment.
Gotcha. Remember, we used to see more of those in Haddon in a while, so that explains that.
Yes.
Other questions, comments from Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you for the presentation. What is the process for becoming an HOD? What's the percentage of the neighborhood that needs to support it?
I believe our benchmark is 51%. The application would not proceed if there was not demonstrated interest by at least 51% of property owners. And we, that is not a city-led process. We will support and provide meeting support, questions, you know, answers to questions as part of that, but the neighborhood themselves will conduct the surveying, inform their neighbors, and they present the, I guess, signatories of, you know, who has stated that they are interested.
What we hear, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to add to that. The last new overlay that was created for Glenwood-Brooklyn, the city was the applicant.
Right, yes.
Yeah, so, but only because we had seen demonstrated interest from the neighborhood, and the city stepped in really because of some of the notice requirements that are different for the city than for the neighborhood. And so, because of the, it's something, a term of art, actual notice is required if you personally try to rezone someone else's property, and the city does not have to go through that requirement. We can do advertisement, mailed notice, posted notice. The actual requirement, the actual notice requires like certified letter or like you have to be served, basically.
Okay.
And that's quite burdensome for a neighborhood, right? But we had, they had already produced a petition with a lot of support from, market support from the neighborhood, and so the city was the applicant.
Okay.
And I would imagine that would be the route going forward.
Exactly.
Provided there was demonstrated enthusiasm from the neighborhood.
I was going to say, because what we hear sometimes in rezonings, I guess we hear from the 49%, and they feel like they were dragged into it, and like the historic, being in the historic overlay district burdens them in terms of what they can do with their property, and then they have to go through the rezoning process to try to get pulled out, and that's also burdensome and costly. And so, I've, I try to respect when a property is in an overlay district and look at RHDC's opinion and determination and recommendation. But I've been thinking more, as I hear from these neighbors and then like look it up on my own, about equity issues, particularly as we're trying to honor some of the history of, for example, Black neighborhoods. We want to, we want to honor the history and preserve the history, and at the same time, allow those property owners to be able to, I guess, benefit from their property, you know, like some other property owners. So, it's just something that I've been sort of thinking about a lot as we get these cases that are in historic overlay districts.
Yes, that's exactly correct. We try to do a, we're trying to do a better job at combating some of the misconceptions of the historic overlay districts, you know, that use is not regulated, you know, that doesn't prohibit you from changing what you can do with your property. And also, that I think it's 98% of COA applications ultimately are approved. So, you know, trying to be better stewards of the process and ensure that, you know, everyone understands what it is that they will be going through.
Thank you. Other questions from the commissioners?
A small question. In the memo, you mentioned the eight HODs, that seven are general and one is street side. Which one is street side?
Glenwood-Brooklyn is our street side historic district.
Other questions and comments?
I just want to say thank you. This has been a very helpful presentation.
Absolutely. Great.
I just want to join our bandwagon and say thank you for this. This was helpful.
Yes. Thank you very much for your time and for this work. We may have some follow-up questions in the future.
Yeah, anytime.
But we'll try not to force you to create a whole presentation around it because this one is very helpful for us to work through. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, that concludes our new business. And moving on to approval of the minutes, there's one item. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes from our October 10th regular meeting? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bennett has seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to other business, the report of the chair. The first item, we, it is, what's it called? National Community Planning Month. And as a result, we all are going to get our picture taken after this meeting. If you would, a group picture, I think. Is it here or out there somewhere?
At the commission's pleasure and whim.
Okay.
We're supposed to give people heads up for this.
That's true.
We should at least go into the lobby. The light is terrible in here.
Yeah, I was going to say that. Worst lighting.
I remember if it was a makeup on or something.
It'll be a group picture that is then probably grainy and shrunk down and combined with many others.
You've been on TV for the last two hours.
Yeah.
I mean, with you.
If you're wondering what this thing behind me has been. And thank you to whoever created that. Was that Janita? Created this.
We bought that.
Oh, phenomenal. Thank you to whoever bought that. And then, the next item, our annual retreat is next week. I've already received a number of good ideas on things that we can include there. If anyone else has thoughts on topics they'd like to discuss, please send me those topics by no later than tomorrow, and we will do our best to include those. And I believe costumes are mandatory, is that right? Per our director, Assistant Director Gus. Perhaps not mandatory, but highly encouraged.
Bring your A-game.
I'm not sure that I will wear a costume, but we'll see. And I believe that that's all. Moving on to report of the other members.
Thanks, Chair Miller. Just a reminder, on Monday, November 6, we'll be in here discussing, as Chair Miller described in his agenda, New Bern zoning and comp plan. Please plan on attending. We do have a second potential meeting on the 29th of November. So, and then our deadline is December 12, so we have a lot to get through in those two meetings. So, please plan on attending, and I think we're staying a little bit later than normal for both.
Would you say 6:30? Plan to attend from 4:00 to 6:30?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And I will note, I believe that the city council does not intend, I think this is our, probably, likely our last extension of time, so we must get it voted out by our December 1st meeting in December.
Yep.
Yes, Commissioner Haver.
No report.
Infrastructure and mobility will not be meeting this month.
No report.
No report.
No report.
Thank you very much. And I may have mentioned, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'd like to add that we do not have a committee of the whole meeting this Thursday.
Excellent. Yes, great. And with that, we move to the report of the Assistant Director.
I wanted to mention previously, while serving as chair, Roberta Fox had been also serving as the Planning Commission liaison to the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission, and would like for you all to make a decision about how you want to staff that relationship going forward. That could be the chair, if she's willing, or another member of the commission, and we will make a note. I was kind of unaware of this because I was not as deeply enmeshed with you all when this happened the first time, but we will bring that forward with elections in the summertime going forward so that we all stay on the same page. And just for context for you all, the chair also is, is working as a liaison with Parks Recreation and Greenway Advisory Board, so that these are, there's more than one obligation, more than what you see at the table, for the expectation of the chair right now. So, I just wanted to offer that for context.
Thank you. Yes. I am now working with the Parks and Advisory Board. This is our liaison from the Planning Commission as well. If anyone has interest in being the liaison for the Stormwater Advisory Commission, I would be very excited to hear about that. Please just reach out and let me know. And, well, we'll call anyone out in particular, but if you have any interest in that, I think it'd be a very meaningful and helpful addition to provide those kind of resources to our commission and that perspective. We can weigh in on some cases with that level of expertise, so that would be great. Just please reach out and let me know.
If you'd like, we could bring this back again at the next meeting if you all need some time to reflect.
Yes.
When does the Stormwater Commission meet?
You don't have to go to the meetings regularly. You just have to check in with, typically, what would happen is you would talk with the chair outside of a public meeting and/or with Wayne Miles, who's the staff liaison there. Yeah. They meet monthly. Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Right, right.
Well, and in that same vein, just something to think about. I know one thing for the retreat that we have discussed previously, if you want to think about it between now and then, over when, since, you know, this commission and its members have been, there are folks that have been here for longer and shorter periods of time. A lot of times, the commissions and their hearings work smoothly when folks understand the different expertise that each of the members offers at the table and their particular interest levels, so that in some cases, as opposed to, you know, feeling like each member needs to be an expert on every topic on a rezoning, that folks can sort of undertake the ability to speak to different aspects of a case and have others defer to them or look to them to have that kind of input. So, if you want to think about what some of your expertise and perspectives might be that you might offer this commission and to share with that at our retreat, that would be extremely helpful. Some themes have already emerged, and I think that's great, but we could maybe discuss some of that at the retreat as well. Any other questions from the, from anyone at the table, for the good of the order? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned.